I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being of us.
Roll call.
Roll call. Paul Cassidy.
Here.
Tanya Hogan.
Here.
Beverly Rose.
Here.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Mark Richard.
Here.
Roy Martin.
Here.
All right, we have public comments on the agenda items. Anybody want to speak on an agenda item?
Good evening. On behalf of SS Downtown Inc., we would like to express our strong support for the approval of the proposal of the algae wheel project. This initiative represents much-needed lifeline to the businesses in our downtown San Souci area. While the owners of San Souci Bar have been most instrumental in championing this concept and certainly stand to benefit from its success, their efforts have always been focused on revitalizing the entire downtown district. Their vision extends beyond the entire, or beyond, excuse me, their vision extends beyond the individual gain, and they have worked to create opportunities that will breathe new life into a community that has otherwise remained stagnant for many years. For years, several properties in the downtown San Souci have sat underutilized, including one building that has remained vacant for more than 14 years. The approval of this algae wheel would serve as a catalyst for renewed investment and growth, providing both new and existing businesses the opportunity and chance to thrive. We urge the approval of this project as a critical step towards ensuring the long-term vitality and economic health of our downtown area.
Agenda items first regarding the treasurer's reports. These reports are grim. Fortunately, we have Ms. Rose as treasurer and Anita as deputy treasurer, who have already been tackling this crises head-on. I hope that the board will accept Christie's formal proposal that she presented. The fact that someone as competent and experienced as Christie would agree to help us out of this financial crisis after facing a smear campaign from someone on this board is really commended, commendable. Thank you, Christie. In the coming weeks, I want this board to take a hard look at this mess and explain to the public as to how this could have happened. How is our treasury department allowed to get to the brink of disaster without the supervisor or clerk sounding the alarm bells? Treasurer, clerk, and supervisor each have independent statutory duties, but they are mutually interdependent. Checks and balances should have been in place. Why weren't they? This cannot be swept under the rug. You need to do a deep dive on how this happened so that it never happens again. And Mr. Cassidy, you mentioned on a social media post that things aren't as dire as they are being presented. If you disagree that our treasury department is in crises mode, then please address that tonight. And since the names of deputy supervisor and parks rec employee were listed below your name, does that mean that they agree with you? The others on the agenda item under public comment. Under Michigan's Open Meeting Act, residents have the right to speak during public comment without interruption. That right is not limited by topic. Board does not have the authority to silence or censor citizens because of viewpoint or topic during public comment segment. Cutting off residents violates both the Open Meetings Act and the First Amendment. The township's own handout states that the chair must not, under any circumstances, enter into a back-and-forth exchange with the public, and the public has a right to make critical and harsh remarks. So in other words, during the public comments portion of the meeting, if I decided to use my entire three minutes to discuss whether or not hemorrhoid cream was an effective cure for the pain in our butts that some of us have felt since November, I can legally do that, and the board is not allowed to interrupt me. I expect this board to respect the public's right to speak freely during public comment. Last comment on the Algenac Water Plant. In possible violation of Michigan's Public Service Ethics Act, our contract for water with Algenac, among several other topics, was discussed in the supervisor's Facebook posts. Please stop discussing your opinions in such a manner.
Good evening. Diane Miller, 7311 B Lane. In regards to the treasurer's report, Bev, I look forward to seeing these updated websites. We've been asking for them for many years. Transparency, I've been asking to be able to see accounts receivable as well as accounts payable, and I hope to see those as well as the investments. We see accounts payable all the time. We always see the money going out, but we never see what's coming back in. So I haven't had a chance to look at your new website, but I look forward to seeing what changes are there. And I hope that they've also included all of the old information that got deleted when it was updated the last time. Because the last time it was deleted, information only went back to 2020 or 2021, and any other historical minutes of meetings and stuff was gone. So anyway, and in regards to item 1A, I hope that Anita will be able to help you. I know that we've paid her for training in the past, and I was hoping that she would be able to step in and pick up the ball while Jerry was on his emergency family medical problems, but that didn't happen. So yeah, hopefully Anita will step up. Now, in regards to item 1B for the proposal to hire Christie, I have some questions on this. I mean, a six-month term for training. I know Jerry asked for training and it was denied, but six months for training. She also states in her proposal that she is going to help assist with the reconciliation that is currently an 11-month backlog. But I understand that we have hired a firm, Maynor, somebody or other, that is doing the reconciliations up to the end of June. So I'm not sure why we need Christie to do that when we've got Anita, who can definitely help you. And definitely, I don't think that six months of training, I don't think you'll need that, Bev, but that's just, that's just me trying to conserve township dollars. But we voted for change, not once but twice, and so I'm hoping that the board will consider that before bringing back Christie as opposed to other avenues of you obtaining your training. Thank you.
If there's no further public comments, we'll move to bills payable. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $222,748.12.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Do a roll call.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Mark Richard.
Yes.
Tanya Hogan.
Yes.
Paul Cassidy.
Yes.
Beverly Rose.
Yes.
Roy Martin.
Yes.
Go to supervisor's report. Want people to know that the bonds were sold. The bonds were sold to, for the improvements, the improvements for our water and sewer. They were sold at 3.74%. We're getting a $200,000 good faith deposit, and I think that it's a pretty good deal, and they're going to be starting to work in the next couple of weeks, if they haven't started already. And I'll reserve any other further report until we get to PCE and Benish. So with that, we'll go to treasurer report.
I was sworn in on Monday, October 6, 2025, and at that time, I appointed my deputy Anita Rezepa. We created new accounts, updated all websites for banking and investments, that's invested the township money, and rolled over the CDs for short-term investment, 30 days. They were due on Tuesday, October 7. On Monday, also spoke with Manor, Dariane, Angie regarding the reconciliation, what she has done up until April. So she's finishing up April right now. In our discussion regarding timeline, Angie said a timeline was never discussed, which is why this is taking so much time. What Manor has done is in BSNA, however, GLs have not been updated. We've corrected that today. I spent most of my first week training on the counter, learning work orders, billing, property taxes, water bills, drawer balancing, and deposits. Spoke to UHY, Paul Bailey, and Tammy Pfizer regarding our audit. We normally start our audit the middle end of August. I had them forward me a list of what was needed to be uploaded that was previously sent, so I can begin uploading documents. Due to the ARPA funds and other grants totaling over $750,000, we will not be able to do a simple audit. This year, we will need to do a full yellow book audit, which is much more detailed and time-consuming. KCI was contacted regarding water bills and prepaid postage. The asset forfeiture for the police department account has been suspended. I'm working on reinstating that. I did that today. As per the previous motion, the financial report will be submitted at the last meeting of the month. For the time being, this will be an unreconciled report, and I will keep the board updated on the monthly reconciliations.
So Bev, I got a couple of questions. When Manor Consortium was brought on board, Jerry told us that, they told him it would be a 30-day process to reconcile.
If he talked to Angie?
I don't know.
Then she said, what her exact words to me was, "A timeline was never discussed."
Can you tell us where that reconciliation is?
Yep. We had a meeting, phone conversation, Anita, myself, and Tanya this morning at 10 o'clock. She is finishing up April right now.
April.
So it should be done. I told her that I want to call UHY and set it up mid-November, so we get our December 31 dot, everything's done by then.
Something done by then.
And she said, "No problem. Go ahead, call them." I did request an estimated bill for what we haven't been billed yet. We have paid them some, and the final bill through September 30th, total of $13,353.50 is what we've paid them so far, and then what we owe them of $3,500.
So the total will be a little over $16,000?
Yes.
Okay. If we were to run it all the way out?
If we run it all the way out, to her due on June 30th, all the way to June 30th. However, the auditors go to tax times. So if we did it in August, we don't have a tax time. The tax time's September. Now we're doing it here, we may, we may hit that December tax if we don't get moving.
Right. Is, so is December 30th our hard deadline?
December 31st is our hardcore stop. That's when the state does the revenue sharing. The federal, I'm not worried about at all. There's no really guidelines, but the state does have guidelines, and an audit is one of them.
Okay. One other question I had. The asset forfeiture for the police department?
Yes.
Was suspended. Could you explain that? Because I don't have a clue what that is.
An asset forfeiture comes from the Department of Justice, and it allows the police department to get extra funds, not millions, but it gives them a little extra funds on asset forfeiture. There was a deadline of September 15th of to enroll, take the 20-minute video, and then because the treasurer's office is where all the money's going to funnel through, and it wasn't done, so it was suspended.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm in that now. I just got the approval and logged in, downloaded all the training, and so that's something that I'm going to tackle within the next day or two.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
No, I'm sorry. It doesn't matter. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Go to consent agenda. We have the reports, payroll, in the minutes. You have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Payroll September 2025, in between meetings, in the board minutes, 4:9225 and 10:325.
I'll support it. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to unfinished business. PCE and Benish, algae wheel proposal. I would ask Mr. Larry Scott to speak to the board on this issue. I think this is something that the board should pass tonight. We've got to get off dead center, and I'm for supporting Benish to do this work. Would you go ahead, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Supervisor, thank you. My name's Larry Scott. We've been here before. I'm from the law firm of O'Reilly Ransilia, and I've been asked to be here on behalf of a number of property owners on Harson's Island. The proposal, we were here on September the 8th, and with a proposal from Benish that you all had in front of you, but there was some discussion about maybe there would be an extra, another proposal. So we skipped the following meeting, and we set them to be here tonight to discuss a proposal from Benish and a proposal from PCE. In the interim, PCE sent a letter saying that they weren't going to be submitting a proposal. You do have the proposal from Benish before you, but before we get to that, and I have representatives here from Benish who want to give you a brief presentation, I have property owners left and right, but I'd like to start with the idea that this project started back in 2023. It started as a state appropriation line item for $2 million, specifically for an algae wheel wastewater treatment plant. Since that time, the township has spent approximately $600,000 of that $2 million. You've spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on engineering fees, and approximately $380,000 has already been paid over to Benish, including a $20,000 contract that was awarded in July of this year. Since then, there's approximately $1,004,000 left from this line item appropriation. On September the 8th, we appeared here, we talked about giving the proposal, we have that here. Benish has put together a proposal with DVM, a contractor that you're familiar with, and I'm told is working in the township now. And between the two of them, they're willing to take on this proposal for a fixed price of $1,004,000, which is approximately what you've got left. That project, if awarded to them, would start with some engineering work and permitting, which would hopefully be done through Eagle by April of 2026, and the construction work would then be done by December, hopefully, of 2026. There's four lots that were deeded from Mr. Coons over to the township for the purpose of this project. Three of those lots would be used with the project. And by the way, when Benish and DVM sign this, if they, if you see fit to award it to them, it will include performance bonds, payment bonds, and warranty bonds. So the idea that what would happen if something happened to one of them, it's no different than the construction work that you've otherwise done in the township. It's bonded, and the bonding companies would have to step up. If this doesn't get done tonight, then we've heard from Senator Hertel, he's going to want his $2 million bucks back, and Mr. Coons is going to want his four lots back. And that's not meant to be a threat of any sort. All I'm trying to tell you is, we've been here, we've come a number of times to the table. The proposal's on the table tonight. These people are here to make a brief slideshow proposal to you, if I can, and answer any questions that anybody has. But we're at do-and-die time with this thing. It's been around for over two years, and we've got to move it forward if we can. So I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, I'd like to call Anthony up, let him make a brief proposal with the slide that, I don't know how to work. Yes, sir?
I do want to include that I did speak with Christine Anderson. She sent some correspondence to us today that she believes that we can do a sole source contract, provided we waive our policy of wanting to get three contracts, three bids. We can waive that, and then she was concerned about whether the funding on this had some restriction on having to give three bids. I did talk to Senator Hertel today again, and he tells me that it's his belief that that's not required. He was going to double-check with the Senate attorneys, but he doesn't believe it's required, and I didn't get a confirmation from one way or the other. But I still think that, given all the facts and circumstances of this, where it went from $2 million to $6.6 million with a complete waste of a lot of taxpayer money, redrawing and engineering that's never going to get accounted for, and now, when I came in, I said, "We aren't doing that." They came back down to $2 million, and they say they can do it for $1.4 million. I said, "Let's let them have it. Let them do it."
You raised your hand.
If you want Mr. Delagie to speak, we know he knows what he's doing.
I've got a very simple question.
I'll try.
At the end of the day, at $1.4 million?
Yes, sir.
Will that end up being a turnkey operation?
Yes, sir.
No other costs?
I should have mentioned, Benish has also agreed to service the facility for two years afterwards.
That's, that's.
Now, that cost, $30,000 a year is being shared by the property owners. It's not part of the $1,004,000.
Okay.
But they've agreed to service it for two years.
How do we have that in writing agreement on the service? You know, that'll be in the contract?
How they make it part of the contract? I'm.
And then how much is it?
They can, but.
How much is it after the two years? What's that go to after two years?
It's going to be $30,000 a year.
I can't tell you that.
For the first two years. And then where does it go?
It's going to be about $3,000 a month. And what I'm told is, is that hopefully.
That cost is being paid by the property.
We're going to have a PDA down there. Don't know whether it's for sure or not, but hopefully we will.
Well, I think we need to know if this is for sure, if we're spending $2 million here rather than, you don't buy a house and then figure out how to pay for it. We need to know how we're paying for this.
I said that from day one.
Right. I understand that. There should be a start, there should be a, there's no plan on this.
There never was, and that's the problem.
Well, maybe we need, as a board or supervisor, have us a plan where it's in black and not white, where what's costing what? And where do you get the money to pay for it if there's an overrun?
Well, we can always give them the $2 million back, right?
Well, if that, I mean, why, and why does it have to be done tonight?
Why not?
Because you're spending money and you have no plan for where you're coming up with the rest of it.
We never had a plan, that's the problem. No one ever had a plan.
That's what I'm saying, Paul. We need to have a plan in place. Are you not waiting for Hertel to come back with that question that you? Yes, why, you can't even.
Well, I say we accept it pending Senator Hertel's information that that, that it's possible to get a sole source contract, and then, let me just tell you something. I mean, we spent tens of thousands of dollars on engineering already. For what? For what?
Well, you fired him, so that's the.
Nobody fired anybody.
That's not.
You stopped, then you stopped him on?
From going from $6.6? I said, "No, John, don't go $6.6. We aren't going to, we aren't going to." Where were you going to come up with $4.6 million?
And then who is overseeing this project, other than you handing Benish $2 million, and who's going to oversee it?
I see you have a solution.
We should have a solution before we go ahead with the plan. Like I said, you don't buy a house and then figure out how to pay for it.
You know, to use your example of buying a house, if you bought a house and got a two-year warranty, at the end of two-year warranty, what happens?
If I bought a house, I would know how to pay the $10,000 a year in property taxes. There's no plan on it. And we're going off of, oh, probably $30,000. There's no plan if it runs over budget or nothing. But I'm the new guy on the board, so the number of questions that I'm asking, the.
All of this should have been decided two years ago. It wasn't. No one said a feasibility study.
So what is the hurry that we have to do it tonight? Because we're not going to put it down.
The hurry is just that we've wasted two years, and to me, that's not a hurry.
So can you do, as a, can you put a plan forward for the board, Paul, of how it's going to start, lay out?
Benish is laid out in their contract.
Their contract, all right. This is what they're telling you they're going to do.
That's right.
That after it's done, they're going to say, "Here's the keys. You figure out how to pay for it."
Well, no, it's paid for. You figure out how to pay for the operation, but.
Yes, that's what I'm asking. There's no plan in place for that.
Well, then, if we decide that we don't want to pay to finance the upkeep and the maintenance and that, then scrap the deal.
So we just spent $2 million, we're going to have a sewage plant there we can't use?
Not my idea.
That's why I'm asking, why do we have to do this? Why can't we?
Can I ask, how many people is it going to take to run the plant? Like, what's the plan for, like, running the plant on a daily basis? And what does that, like, look like for the township? And who steps in and takes over that when Benish is done?
Sure. So, hey, Roy, how you doing?
Not bad.
So I, we do contract operations for other, oh, I'm sorry. So Benish does contract operations for other communities, and so we'll operate their water system, their wastewater system, under a contract. Marine City has a similar situation right now with Fleece and Vanderbrink. So it's, it's very common that a community that needs to have those people will just hire them under a contract. That contract's usually tied to the duration of their permit. So your permits are four years, and then they get reviewed by the state to see if there's more strict limits or changes in, you know, water quality that they need to address. That gives time for the community and the company that you've hired to look at, you know, is there more time being spent? You know, is there a new chemical that we're going to need to add? But that doesn't change drastically. It's pretty stable during the duration of the permit. And so the, the duration of that operations contract, like I mentioned in July, would be tied with that permit renewal. And so we would, we would offer that up. That is something that can be chosen, or you can have other operators do it. But one thing that we pride ourselves on is that we'll, we'll always offer contract operations in a plant like this, if we have the staff, which we do in our Detroit office. So, because that shows the community that we're designing for, that we're not going to cut corners. Because if we did, we'll be living with those, with those deficiencies for years under a fixed operations contract, right? And so the number of $30,000 was thrown around because that's basically boiled down how many hours we know it takes to operate a plant like this. So, and that's from my experience operating two other facilities similar to it. So, so that's kind of where that's all come from. Dan's our licensed operator in Michigan, so he'd be the one to talk a lot about that, too.
Anthony, excuse me. So to that point, the $30,000 number was based on how many hours per week?
So it's 200 and some hours per year is what it was.
200 some per year?
Yeah.
Does that include the six-month inspection by the supervisor?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, what we do is, to keep our hours efficient, we set up auto sampling. So it takes a composite sample throughout the week. It refrigerates that sample, and then when our operator comes once a week, or sometimes twice a week, depending, they'll be taking that sample to the lab for analysis, and then it goes to the state. So that meets our permit requirements. Only other thing that's done is any kind of, like, routine maintenance, but this treatment plant's a small footprint in a greenhouse. There's not a lot of, it's not a major plant like the 2 million gallon per day plant here on the mainland.
What about the water testing, chemicals? What's the, is that included in that $30,000?
Yeah, that, that's a part of the contract operations.
So that comes out to less than four hours, four man-hours? So, that comes out to less than four hours, four man-hours per week?
Yeah, that's great.
And you think that's accurate?
Yeah, that works pretty good. I've been doing one very much like this. And, it's really more like three hours, and then, monthly, we have some special things that we do. And then, yearly, there's a report that we do. So, when you boil that all down, it's four, about four hours a week. That's alright.
So, I think, based on the permit, the way I read it, Eagle's gonna require a monthly report?
Yeah, a DMR, they call it.
Right. And is that, how many, how many samples a week is that based on pulling?
Well, so, your permit spells that out, that you have grab samples.
Right.
You can do a, like I said, the auto sampler will do a diurnal. So, it'll, it'll do a composite sample of the week. So, it'll take a little bit every day, at set intervals in the day, and that creates a composite sample for the week. And that also, that's superior to a grab sample, so...
So, when Eagle says they want their, their frequency monitoring five times a week, that qualifies?
Yep.
Under their guidelines?
Yes.
Does that 30,000 include the ferry fees?
I bet, I bet it would, yeah.
How much would you bet?
Well, you know, hopefully, it'll be alright for the first couple of years, right?
My other question is, in regards to, not, not only man-hours, but lab fees to set those samples up. I'm assuming Benash is not gonna do those in-house, you're gonna send those to the lab?
Yeah, we send them out, and we have, we have some...
So, lab fees for that frequency of sampling, where does that come in, cost-wise?
Well, we'd spell that out. I mean, it's, it is what it is, right? In terms of the cost of...
Well, it is what it is, but we need to know that.
Does it, does it, all that fit into the 30,000 dollar number, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, that's what we'd studied before. I mean, we didn't prepare a operations proposal.
Okay, because the only reason I asked, I've consulted with other sewage treatment plant operators, and based on that sampling, their lab fees are a lot more than 30,000 dollars a year. So, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna do, there's no phosphorus limit here, there's no ammonia limit.
You certainly sit down and look at...
Right. Your, your limits here are very, are a lot less than most plants, though. Most plants will have a phosphorus limit, so...
No, I understand that, right.
And then, they'll have a, like, here, you have chlorination, so then, you need, you have a chlorine limit. There, the design calls for ultraviolet disinfection, so that avoids that.
They've got 10 items here that they want sampled.
Yeah, they're pretty cheap. They're, so like, what, give me one of them.
Total suspended solids.
TSS is probably a 20-dollar test.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Five times a week.
No, you do the one...
That's what they're asking for, five times a week.
But it's, that's, I said, it's a diurnal sample, that's a composite sample.
No, I understand that, right.
But you do, you'd send it to the lab once, per week.
Okay.
If you do the numbers, it's, there's eight taps, 30,000 a year. Is that right?
Yep.
Alright. Divided by 12, divided by 8, that's 312 dollars TSS to anybody that's got a tap.
There's eight taps on that paper. We said tap.
37.50 a month, and there's eight taps, divide that by 8, you come up with 312.
Comes out to 833 dollars per quarter, per customer.
I just ran it.
Your calculator's broke.
300,000, 37.50.
You're doing eight taps or four taps?
You're doing eight, eight business taps. Yeah, they're commercial, so, it's, you're gonna have your commercial rate, and then, it would be based on water consumption, just like you do in the rest of your billing. So, you do a quarterly based on the amount of water that you use for your sewer bill.
12 months.
Your thousand, per thousand.
That's not right.
So, not everybody would pay, I mean, you can do a fixed rate for each person, but what you're doing in the rest of the township is, is you're charging by usage.
I don't think we even discussed how we would handle that.
Do we, is there like a plan for every, all the businesses down there? Are they, all the businesses down there are on board with hooking up to the LG wheel and paying those fees?
I mean, that's, that's the engagement that we had during the value engineering study.
We're paying 97,000 dollars a year to pump and haul now. The chunk change you're talking about, we don't care about.
We understand that, that's getting, but there's, what I'm saying is, there's no plan, once this thing's built. There's no plan to start this thing. You're handing over, the engineer, you're handing everything over, say, "Here, build this." They're gonna find themselves, well, alright, they're gonna build it. Then you have to have a plan in to place to, it's...
They were operated for two years.
Two years, after two years.
For maybe 30,000, but it could be more than John asked them.
But I, you guys are fully, like, we could go into contracts with you guys, stating that you're going to pay that fee for the infinity future.
Take those 40,000, we don't care.
I understand that.
But Bruce, here's the issue. I understand it's a big savings for, for San Suzy Bar. Hold on. Hold on, I understand that. But, for the other seven customers, they're looking at 833 dollars a quarter. Do they know that they're gonna get a sewer bill for them?
Yeah, but it's based off of, while I admit it's based off sewage rates.
Says who? Says who?
How you bill another district.
That, no, that's not how we bill another districts.
Can I answer this?
Yeah, go ahead.
We did, we went to the different business owners, we've all paid 100 dollars a month a day. I'm here as a representative. They did say I can represent them. We pay 100 dollars.
So, this is all eight?
Yes.
Okay.
They pay 100 bucks a month. Okay, that doesn't come near covering. We're the biggest user. We pay them, we take the water bill, whatever the water uses, she uses this much, I use that much, we split it up to the bills pay. And, you people are missing this point. The 40,000 or 50,000 a year to someone like this gentleman or myself, at this point, is nothing. And we're willing to sign the contract for the legacy payment, shall you say, for this plant.
So, I'm, I'm confused. What do you mean when you say you're willing to sign the contract and pay that?
Like, if we, if they went and formed a contract stating that they're going to cover the cost to run this LG wheel for...
But, but who are they? Who are they?
San Suzy Bar just said, San Suzy Bar's gonna stay there.
Bruce, is there a... No, no.
Is that correct, though? San Suzy Bar, correct?
I would like to say something. I represent some, I'm a property owner in San Suzy. Okay, I'm gonna put in perspective of how other municipalities and what I'm going through for a personal residence that I have. So, I'm building a personal house, I have to put a lift station in. For them to, for the township to approve my lift station, that's on my private property that pumps out to the county road. I have to enter what they, it's stormwater. So, I have to enter a stormwater management agreement with the county and the township that says, "I will maintain my lift station from here until that, the house burns down and the property's no longer used." Whether I own it, somebody else owns it, because then, if, if I don't maintain it and the township has to come in and maintain it, they add it to my tax bill. And they call it stormwater management agreement. So, if the people that are in the district of the sewer enter a sewage management contract with you guys, there's your, then if you gotta, if you guys have to step in and pay the bill, then you backtax it to the people.
We've never had that discussion, that's why I'm asking these questions.
So, that's just one way to do it.
I'm sorry, Larry doesn't want me to talk here, but after two years, to have these discussions at this point, is, why didn't we have these a year ago?
We're here tonight. We were asked to make a proposal. We made it September. We're making it again pursuant to your instructions. We're here tonight, we've made the proposal. We're trying to answer any questions that anybody wants.
Bruce, I think we punished the downtown area long enough, in that we should have...
Is that 30,000 in this contract?
No, not complaining.
To approve it.
No, it has to be put in the contract, number one.
I just have one more question. So, after Benash is finished running, after Benash is finished running the plant, do you guys have a plan on how to run it after that?
That's why you need to agree that.
I just wanna know if there's like a, a next step.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have a sewage treatment plant on one of my properties that I own.
Okay.
In a different community, but it's a little different than an LG wheel. And I have a contract with people that do the same thing, that Benash does.
Okay. I just wanna know there's a longevity plan.
There's multiple companies. They have, we choose to go with, Benash, we choose to go with the other guy.
They have somebody maintaining. The Eagle permit requires.
I understand.
Well, I understand that, but I just wanna know if there, if that, if we're getting, I wanna know what's happening when we get past the two years with them, if that is going to continue on, somebody's coming in to do it? Or if it's gonna fall on the township to step in and do something?
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to answer Roy's question directly about, you know, a plan, and having a plan. So, because of the cost currently for the business owners to pump and haul, it was sort of a mute point, that 30,000 dollars for operations, because they, they know they're gonna have a bill. And they know that bill's gonna be substantially less than being out of business or having 100,000 dollar per year pump and haul. So, it's kind of a mute point. And we have a system in place at the township that I put in place eight years ago, Waterworth, that allows us to develop our own rates internally. And it works really well for the rest of the township. So, the assumption was, we would fall into those, that same thing. There's subcategories in that software that allows you to have that in your budget for the treasurer. And, and so, you, you have all the tools at your disposal to, to develop those rates, to create a billing system. All these people are water users for your water system, so it would be an amended water sewer bill for those people. And you're basically administering a privatized water, or wastewater system, that they're backstopping the cost of, right? And so, that cost, you know, that you would bill your cost, the, the client would not be the 30,000, right? Or the, the resident? It would be the 30,000, plus you'd wanna have a little bit in there for replacement parts. And that's in our lifecycle analysis, which is in our report. So, we spell out all the, all the costs you wanna incur in your bills, so that you're covered, you know, for the longevity of the plant. But it's serving those people. So, ultimately, those people are the responsible parties to pay, not everybody in the township, right? And, just last thing was, is the cost to build this plant is completely covered 100% by a grant. And so, the, the key, the reason we were tasked to do a value engineering study was because we were told, that's what can be spent, and nothing more. And so, can you do it for that, has been asked many times, and, you know, we spent six weeks preparing, eight weeks preparing this value engineering study to, to show you that we can, so...
But ultimately, Benash is going to bill Clay Township, right?
Yeah, well, we're in contract with you.
If we were to bring you on to run the plant, you're gonna bill Clay Township?
Yes, we could do that, yeah.
Okay. So, ultimately, we're responsible for all bills and fees that are due.
So, that's up to you. If you want us to bill someone else, you can direct us to bill someone else. That's, that's up to you.
I mean, is there, is there an LLC amongst the San Suzy businesses, or any type, officially?
Well, the proposal I had tonight, which I don't wanna step on Larry's, but yeah.
They, they have a 501(c)(3), I believe. When I was here years ago, there, there was one for the district.
How can they have a 501(c)(3) strictly charity?
It's nonprofit, yeah.
They can have a nonprofit.
I, I don't know if it's a c)(3). It's 501-something, yeah.
Could be c)(4).
Yeah, right.
c)(5). Do you have containment, or overflow containment?
Yes, we do.
How big is the tank?
For two days.
Two day, two days worth of this jar?
Two days worth of flow, yeah. But we have, we'll have SCADA systems in our control panels, so we'll know immediately if something's overflowing into that tank.
So, Anthony, in your proposal, it says soil boring and soil testing is not included. Would that be something that would be necessary?
We, we received a geotechnical report, so we don't need any.
So, there's nothing further that would be required?
No, it would be on us to, if we required it.
It also says the proposed size on the piping is two and four inch. I'm assuming that's the main, from the, from the customers to the, to the plant?
I'm not sure where that is.
Yeah, that would be for the collection system.
Collection system?
From the grinder stations to the plant.
Right. So, I understand force main volume is a lot different than gravity, but if that were ever to be expanded in the future, is that size large enough to accommodate future expansion?
We would certainly look at that when we actually completed the design. You know, we don't wanna make something that only services the eight with no possibility of expansion.
Absolutely.
So, if it can service more people with the four, I mean, the cost is nominal to go from a two-inch to a four-inch, or...
I was just curious what those sizes were based on, when you...
Just estimated.
Well, Barnes also, 'cause the, Barnes pumps is the, so the, your supplier you pre-purchased equipment from, provides Barnes equipment? And so, obviously, it makes sense to, for us to go back to your supplier, and he had specifications from Barnes on the low-pressure system. So, that's where those sizes come from.
Because you know, at some point, if this thing is put in place, it's gonna be, other people are gonna wanna, to hook you. I'm just saying, that's how it works.
Yep.
See that whole area north of San Suzy becoming...
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, yeah, and south. And, you know, that, low-pressure systems are pumped flow. And so, the, the manifold that's shared by everyone is the bigger pipe. And so, that's obviously size, I mean, it's a pumped pipe, so it's not gravity.
And I only saw that as a four-inch.
Right. But, for example, force mains, we have 13 lift stations in Clay Township. And, the force mains between those lift stations under canals that are servicing the whole neighborhood are all four-inch. We have one big one that's the, coming from IRA, but, you know, the force main size is full, full pipe versus gravity pipe, it's always half or less. We never use anything more than 50%. So, you can do a lot more with a four-inch pipe, in other words, then.
Under force conditions, right?
Correct.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do we know what the amount is left in that grant money?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is an estimate, and I'm not sure if it's 100% correct, because it goes back to December of '23, and it looks like about 371,000 has been spent.
371,000. I think it's more than that. That doesn't include the engineering fees that you charged for that. That 378, I think, went to Benash, or the...
To Algy Wheel.
It went to Algy.
This, this is everything out of the 597, which is the.
The Algy Wheel has its own line in the general ledger to keep track of, so yes, it, it is out of the first million has, and that is what we have tracked.
To the best that I can find.
Three, three somethings left, or three something?
No, that's what was spent. That's what was spent.
What was the number?
371.
So $629,000 approximately is left?
Out of the first million.
Out of the first million.
And I did have a couple nice slides to show you when you want to see them, when you're ready to see them. Nice, want some more fun? Yeah, fun stuff, light stuff, right? What the plant will look like. I have a video of it.
If you'd like.
Yeah, okay. I'll just jump to that, though. Yeah, sure.
Craig, you want to sit here?
If you don't want.
So to give you an idea as well of expandability, so the design that, that we came up with, it's containerized, which I mentioned in July, but at the same time, it's housed in a, in a greenhouse structure. So this is the, this is exactly what it'll look like. I got a video I'll show you next. Inside that greenhouse is this containerized system. That diagram in the lower right is basically showing how the container is a part of the structure of that greenhouse, and then that's kind of a view of it in a factory where they make them. Now, up in the upper right is one option for expansion, where we just extend that, that greenhouse building and add another module behind it, and so that'll double your capacity with a very, still in the very small footprint. And that's an isometric view, kind of like what you'd see out on the island. The only thing you'll see above ground is the greenhouse and then the Algy Wheel system inside it. So this is a video of what it looks like. Yeah.
What kind of wind force will that withstand?
It'll be, it'll be designed for our ASC7 winds, so 100, what is it, 110? Yeah, 110 miles per hour. And so a little teaser, this would be phase two, where we could accept more primary solids. That auger would be a screen, for screenings. So that would be kind of your phase one, phase two out there. We wrote in our report that we thought a phase two that would allow people to take their septic to the facility would help a bigger audience on the island. If you have people that have problems with their septic, or it's failing or whatever, you can help those people without a big infrastructure cost. It's a containerized system. So if we want to do the rest of the slides, I'll hand it over to my colleague, Dan Gustella.
So, you know, we submitted our, our VE study proposal last week, and so here's kind of our summary of that. So big thing, of course, is the wetlands mitigation. So shortly after we were hired to, to begin performing the VE study, we reached out to Eagle and had a conversation with them about how can we mitigate the wetlands issue, right? So on July 30th, we were able to confirm that if the temporary impacts are restored, and if we are able to reduce the size to one-tenth of an acre, we can actually avoid wetlands mitigations on this project. So with the containerized solutions, we were able to get it in, I think, 1,500 square feet. I think that might be the next slide, but. So, and then with that, once we were able to kind of get into the containerized solution in the tenth of an acre, how do we lock in those design costs? So that began with the redesign and reducing down to the eight businesses and affecting just those, that downtown district. So we worked with Algy Wheel and reduced that wastewater treatment size down to less than 1,500 square feet, and the total site footprint with the drive, the pad, everything would be under one-tenth of an acre. The collection system, that again was revised to service just the eight downtown businesses at, for this phase, again, similar to the Naples, New York, that I believe several people went and checked out. We did receive water consumption from the township, and we were able to apply a factor of safety on that for, you know, when businesses hopefully start seeing more people, or maybe a new business comes in and make sure that this plant can handle that increased demand, which we came out to be about a peak flow of six gallons per minute. So I think Anthony used the analogy before of like a garden hose. So the processed design, so we were able to run a model with Algy Wheel and confirm that it can in fact meet the NPDES permit, you know, MI0060367 on August 28th. And then we felt that the delivery method best for this was sort of a traditional approach, but it's more, it's called the CMAR, construction management at risk, where you bring on the contractor early on so you can make sure that your prices are good, so you can avoid any unknown costs, things of that nature, early in the design phase, and be able to stick to that budget. So one nuance with the design that we came up with is we were going to propose a step system, and that's where we leave the septic tanks in place, but all of the liquids would then be pumped to the wastewater treatment plant. So what that does is that helps the solids handling of the plant, and what it's, can you help me with this? It's.
Yeah, so we install traditional grinders.
True, yeah.
You're not chopping the solids up.
Right. So then that reduces what needs are at the plant to be able to treat the water and meet the permit. So this will, one condo is now all the solids are in your tanks, so similar to if you have a house with a septic field, you have to get your tank pumped every so often, so that would still be required, but only the solids, not the water. So since the San Sushi bar is the largest, they would be keeping their tanks in place, and routine, routine maintenance would be needed, but again, with all the liquids going to the plant, that's what brings that down. And then, so that would be the step system. And eventually, if the plant is able to be upsized or increased or modified, we could eliminate the tanks as well.
Yeah, and one thing I'll add to the step system is, is that we've seen we can add septic influence filters or effluent filters, because the, a key to this design, because treatment plant design is composed into different parts, primary, secondary, tertiary. This is a secondary system, Algy Wheel, by its definition. So the primary part, which is the solids that are coming in, have to be controlled in order for the secondary part to perform well. By doing a good job with solids management upstream, you're able to get a lot more out of the secondary treatment in a smaller footprint. So that's a key to the, to the design value engineering was how we manage solids and what would be acceptable in this phase one, right, after talking with the business owners. So if you choose to, to move forward with us, we would do an amendment to our design consulting agreement with the township, and then like Larry said, we would start a permitting process that would last until April. Construction process, because we're select, we're being selected with a contractor that has a guaranteed maximum price, we, the township knows, okay, that price is fixing the, the, the total amount, so it becomes a qualifications-based selection, not a price-based selection, because everybody's price would be the same. So qualifications allows us to allow contractor with those, with, in all those in-house services to, to be able to start construction on things like, for example, remediating the, the temporary impacts to the wetlands, things like that. Eagle allows us, allows to be done. I mean, there's not much left in this year, but then by, by the spring, you know, the major construction would start, and, and commissioning would end in December. Organizationally, Dan would be your, your project manager. He has family in the area also, so he's always here in Marine City. And then I would be your designer, your design lead, you know, from, from my office, and I would come periodically just as a part of our contract to make sure the design meets the construction. And then we have all these other people that, when you hire us, you'll get to meet, and they're great people, and they make sure that we, what we decide has been checked, has been reviewed, and we have a very, very strict quality control system at Vanesh. The CMAR part of it, construction manager at risk, so that is a very common practice for, for example, MDOT, you know, Department of Transportation, they'll have X amount of dollars from taxes or whatever, fuel fees, and they need to get a certain amount done. And so they'll go out to contractors and they'll say, hey, this is our guaranteed maximum price, can we get this done? This is what needs to be done at the very minimum, right? And so the problem in, in, in this project is that you've already pre-purchased equipment. And so that purchase that was made for, so it was $378,000 that was pre-purchased last year, I had to negotiate with those suppliers to apply that to our design, right? And so that was a little bit of a tricky thing because they were expecting that to be 50% of what they were going to get, and I had to break them the hard news that that's actually 100% of what you're getting. And so in that, now we have a contractor that needs to be, needs to have all those services in-house, right? Directional drilling, treatment plant experience.
Site grading.
High, high water, site grading. All those things have to be in-house, and at the same time, he has to accept being assigned equipment from a certain provider, and that he has to be able to do that all within a fixed price, right? Guaranteed maximum price. And that we're not done with the design yet. We have to work together to complete the design. So a CMAR doesn't work without the two partners, right? The engineering design consultant and the construction manager at risk. And when we go through the permit process, there'll be little tweaks and changes that happen to make Eagle happy. We've accounted for those things because we've done this, so we've accounted for these things in each part of that treatment plant. And we've also made sure that your suppliers who've been prepaid will, will honor their, their equipment list, right? Major equipment list. So that's what a value engineering study delivers. And so the DVM Utilities is already working for the township or has worked for the township. They were here early on in the process when we talked about other delivery methods, other ways of financing, and so, and they were also present when we did our site visits to the Algy Wheel in Naples, New York, and I think somebody also came to the one in Indiana when we brought all the people from the island on a Greyhound bus or bus we chartered down to Indiana, to La Porte. So those were, that shows a knowledge or understanding of that particular type of technology and its nuances, right? Because they have to put a guarantee, a warranty on the work they provide you. So that's the at-risk part. And I think I summarized it, but that's the summary of all our value engineering and the steps that we took to get there. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
How soon can I complete this plan?
How soon can I complete? You're talking the design?
I think the whole thing.
The whole thing? Oh, so December of 2026 is our proposed completion date.
Up and running?
Yep. You know, it's a package plant, so I'm cheating a little bit, right?
I understand, but I remember, I remember a date of, what's the date, Mr. Cassidy? November of 2024, I think, was supposed to be up and running.
That was the date.
Yeah, I mean, that's why you're, that's why I'm standing in front of you, so yeah. I did have a little thing called Sopico I went and did, so.
Question regarding mitigation. One-tenth of an acre or under.
Yeah.
On the footprint of the plant, that also includes the collection system also, correct?
No, because that's temporary.
Correct, yeah. So.
Because the, the collection system would be underground and not a permanent.
Okay, that's not the way Eagle explained it to me.
It's temporary.
They, they said it was the plant and the collection system.
It is what's showing.
So, so there's two types of impacts, right? Permanent and temporary.
I understood, that's, we talked about that.
Yep, permanent impacts is the tenth of an acre.
Right.
Total, right? So that, that's the, you know, our treatment plant is 1,500 square feet. A tenth of an acre would be 4,300 square feet.
Right.
So we have some legal room there in order to build it there.
Well, I was just curious how, how big the plant compared to that footprint of a tenth.
Yep. And then we're staying in the right of way, our proposed route is staying in the right of way and in existing easements, and so restoration of those impacts would reduce the permanent impact, right?
So if the plant were to expand in the future, you still have that one-tenth or maybe more for expansion?
Yeah, it's, it's actually really important that we stayed off of the fourth parcel, and we didn't impact that parcel at all, and that that parcel kind of is treated separately because that'll allow that whole process to potentially duplicate itself. Open discussion, we're already in the discussion.
Does the seaweed have to be replaced?
It's a great question. Can I take a question from the audience, Chairman?
I would say yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
What was the question?
I would say yes.
Does the seaweed need to be replaced?
Oh, the algae.
Yeah, so I'm used to Robert's rules, so I make sure I defer.
Go ahead.
So.
Selective motion.
So the algae is an amazing biology because it's always indigenous to the place that it's from. If you try to seed a algae plant with algae from somewhere else, let's say you're trying to make biomass for biofuels or whatever, the indigenous species will take over, colonize the old species, kill it, and seed itself in your, in your process. So it's a, it's more, it's always considered a nuisance algae in wastewater because it's, it wants, that's nature's way of cleaning up pollution, right? So the technology was likely chosen in the appropriation because of that characteristics, right? That it's a nature-based solution, very low energy, and it's sort of the harnessing nature's way of dealing with, with wastewater pollution, right? And so, so that's the easy part is the algae, because it, it does its thing, it's, lives on the wheel, eating the bacteria that's eating the wastewater. And so it's the predator in that situation, and as long as there's wastewater, there'll be algae. Did I answer your question?
All right, thank you. I would propose a motion to contract with Vanesh to design and construct an Algy Wheel sanitary system as per the contract proposed, after review by the township attorney and approval through Senator Hertel that we are allowed to do this. And then I would propose that we waive our policy of acquiring pre-bids.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
So $1.4 million project, and we're going to waive our right to bid it.
Yes, we're going to at this point. I guess you could say it was a 6.6 million, but we reduced it down, so.
And what is our plan if we have cost overruns?
Well, they're guaranteeing their price.
I understand that.
Well, that's a guarantee.
Is it?
Well.
That's a performance bond and a payment bond, but.
I believe Larry Scott.
So we can, we can hang that on you, Mr. Supervisor, to take care of the balance?
You can hang it on me, yep, you can.
So who's going to draw up the single source letter?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to draw up the single source letter?
Well, we'll have Christine Anderson do it.
She's already sent one, one email saying that there was, only the thing that was the township policy about $10,000, but she and I both, over the last three days, have researched this single source question a lot, and it's, it's, there isn't any requirement for bidding, requiring more than one bid.
Well, but the township has a policy that requires.
I just said the township has a policy for $10,000, but that's all we could find. We looked high and low in case law, statute, on and on and on, and it's not there. And Christine sent her letter saying what I've just told you.
Like to do a roll call vote?
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
No.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think we have new business, 1A. Pointing Anita Rezepa as deputy treasurer. Chair motion?
She's already been appointed deputy treasurer. I'm asking for her to.
To be moved back to the treasury.
Yes, she, she requested it also. I have a letter of support having her come back to treasury.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to move Anita Rezepa back to the Treasury Department from the Building Department to work as the deputy treasurer and a treasury assistant.
Support.
How many supports do you need?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Propose. Motion carries. Reconciliation, reconciliation update and proposal. We have a letter.
Yes, I can go ahead and read it if you like.
Go ahead, if you like.
Okay. Our reconciliations have not been done in-house since October of 2024. Manor has, was hired to do the general ledger to bring us up to date for the budget year, which ends June 20, June 30th, 2025. You must have a beginning number to move on to the next month's reconciliation, therefore I can't begin July until June is completed, and as I said earlier, they're finishing up April. We can't even schedule an audit until these bank reconciliations are completed and general ledger updated. The person most familiar with our system, our auditors, and every aspect of the Treasury Department has agreed to assist Anita and I to get to the point where we are ready for the. for the audit. Remember, we must schedule this by October 31st to ensure UHI has the personnel and schedule to accommodate us. Failure to complete the audit by December 31st, May, so May, result in a loss of state revenue sharing for Clay Township. I requested a proposal from former Treasurer Christie Hiltonan, who graciously supplied one, to work with Anita and I to get up to speed and prepared for our final audit, for our full audit at a decelerated pace. And I've included her proposal.
Any discussion? There's no motion yet, I know.
I'm going to make a motion to accept Chrissy Hiltonan's proposal to help us get caught up. I think it's incredibly, after everything that has gone on and the way she's been treated to want to do this and help the township, I think that's admirable. So I will make a motion to accept her proposal.
Support.
All right, discussion? Is this something Manor can't do?
Manor can't do this, no.
I thought they were doing it.
I think there's a lot more that Manor is not working on everything. They are working on just the general account. We still have to worry about tax and DDA. Christie has years of experience with how the township works and she's willing to step up and help us get caught up and be able to get our audit done in time. I think we accept the help.
I think it's a wonderful offer and it's basically $12,000 to save us from losing that revenue sharing. The, the person that knows our system, our way, is Christie Hiltonan. And if I was in trouble with the law, am I going to go with the best attorney I can afford or a public defender? Christie Hiltonan is Effie Bailey. That's who you are. I want the best.
So Bev, would we not need Manor Consortium to continue?
If this gets approved tonight, I will stop them.
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries.
Do you have hard-time firefighters, a proposal to hire?
I'm asking permission from the Clay Township Board of Trustees to hire two part-time firefighters. Peyton Walter Yost. Peyton is currently employed with Lakeshore Outdoor Services and works part-time at Ira Township Fire Department. He lives in Algenack and graduated from St. Clair High School in 2023. Peyton currently holds a State of Michigan firefighter one and two, and he has his hazmat ops certification and also a State of Michigan license for EMT. Do you want me to do the other one? Okay. Matthew L. Welsh. Matthew is currently employed at Hungry Howies. He lives in Clinton Township, graduated from Lance Cruz High School. Matthew attended McComb Community College Fire EMS program and currently holds his State of Michigan Fire One, Fire Two hazmat ops certification. He also is a State of Michigan licensed EMT. Both of them have, we had their interview and both candidates have passed their background checks.
Does this fit within the budget?
Well, with, I have two people that are deployed overseas on military orders and I have two people on leave of absence. And what this will do is take up some of the overtime that we accrue throughout the weeks.
What is their availability? Just curious.
What's their availability?
Availability? Pretty much.
How often can you work?
About five days a week. I have school two days, so other five.
Do you guys have experience working in any other departments or will this be your first job working in a department?
This is my second apartment.
Okay.
And this is my first fire department, but I had a year on the road experience at MedStar.
Okay.
Full-time EMT.
It looks like you're all, everybody's quali- qualified, so that's, that's a good thing. You got all the certifications in place, so I'll make a motion to accept Peyton Walter Yost.
Yes, sir.
And Matthew L. Welsh.
Yes.
To the employment of the Clay Township Fire Department.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries.
So I'd like to, I'd like to note, are they going to be trained in hazardous material cleanup at the algae plant?
Well.
Hopefully there's no hazardous material there.
There might be after Saturday night.
Congratulations, guys.
Go to fire annual audit testing.
I'm asking permission from the Township Board. We conduct our annual fit testing and this is for the firefighters' respirators. They wear a mask. It's an AV 3000 and that's for them to be able to go into hazardous areas and they breathe air out of it. And the other fit testing is for their N95 masks. That's for particulates such as TB, COVID. They'll be tested for those two and also be doing a pulmonary function test for lung capacity. They'll come right to the fire station and conduct these tests for the firefighters. We've used them years past.
I remember. And that covers all personnel?
That covers all personnel. Yep, that's all 30 firefighters.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire annual fit testing in the amount of $4,999 from GL 206000962.
Support.
All right, roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
1E Water Plant Actuator Replacement Phase Two. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the Water Plant Actuator Replacement Phase Two for $69,984.11 out of GL number 591000939.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I did talk to Josh at the water plant. This is a, he said between a five and 20-year item that needs to be replaced. They are going to do the, all the labor on the install in-house, which is about $150,000 savings. So figure 62% of that is Clay Township savings.
All right, roll call.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
All right, we've got these curb boxes. Lance, can you speak to that?
There's curb boxes and 25 pit covers on the, in the letter. What I'm looking for is to be able to get curb boxes and pit covers to do repairs and do new services also.
All right.
In the budget?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of supplies, including curb boxes, pit covers.
Support.
Total of $5,125.
I'll support that.
Out of line number 591-746.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Purchaser of equipment trailer, you found a trailer, right, Lance?
Yes, this is the same trailer that I brought to you guys about a year ago. And in order for us to be able to carry our backhoe or our skidster, this is the trailer. It is triple axle. It is dual-wheel for all three axles and it is electric brakes.
Where are you going to get it from?
It's going to come from DR Trailer for the cost of $35,999.
Do we have a motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve the DPW's purchase of an equipment trailer in the amount of $35,999 from GL line 591000970.
Support.
All right, roll call.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
All right, we've got these curb boxes. Lance, can you speak to that?
There's curb boxes and 25 pit covers on the, in the letter. What I'm looking for is to be able to get curb boxes and pit covers to do repairs and do new services also.
All right.
In the budget?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of supplies, including curb boxes, pit covers.
Support.
Total of $5,125.
I'll support that.
Out of line number 591-746.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Purchaser of equipment trailer, you found a trailer, right, Lance?
Yes, this is the same trailer that I brought to you guys about a year ago. And in order for us to be able to carry our backhoe or our skidster, this is the trailer. It is triple axle. It is dual-wheel for all three axles and it is electric brakes.
Where are you going to get it from?
It's going to come from DR Trailer for the cost of $35,999.
Do we have a motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve the DPW's purchase of an equipment trailer in the amount of $35,999 from GL line 591000970.
Support.
All right, roll call.
Would have been nice if we would have got some ARPA money on something like that, wouldn't it?
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Okay, we have the purchases of brass fittings, Lance?
Yes. I need some fittings that don't go bad. They are lead-free and I do better if I order 50 at a time as compared to doing either onesie-twosies or anything like that. I get a better discount on them. And these are for doing the same thing. I mean, we had a leak right in front of the gas station today. I, two compression couplings and a chunk of copper in order to fix it. So brass fittings are something that we use all the time.
Do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of brass fittings in the amount of $17,625. GL 59100074600.
Support.
Roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
All right, then we have superintendent contract. This runs till 2026?
Yes, it would.
Lance, do you plan on staying after the first of the year or you don't know?
Not at this point in time.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this contract until the next meeting. I just had a couple of questions that I prefer to talk to Lance separately about.
I'll support that.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Southwater Municipal Fourth Quarter Invoice. Do we have a motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve this fourth quarter invoice for the Southwater Municipal in the amount of $96,382.61 coming from GL 59000809.
Support.
All right, roll call.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
All right, we've got these curb boxes. Lance, can you speak to that?
There's curb boxes and 25 pit covers on the, in the letter. What I'm looking for is to be able to get curb boxes and pit covers to do repairs and do new services also.
All right.
In the budget?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of supplies, including curb boxes, pit covers.
Support.
Total of $5,125.
I'll support that.
Out of line number 591-746.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Purchaser of equipment trailer, you found a trailer, right, Lance?
Yes, this is the same trailer that I brought to you guys about a year ago. And in order for us to be able to carry our backhoe or our skidster, this is the trailer. It is triple axle. It is dual-wheel for all three axles and it is electric brakes.
Where are you going to get it from?
It's going to come from DR Trailer for the cost of $35,999.
Do we have a motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve the DPW's purchase of an equipment trailer in the amount of $35,999 from GL line 591000970.
Support.
All right, roll call.
Would have been nice if we would have got some ARPA money on something like that, wouldn't it?
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
All right, we have the purchases of brass fittings, Lance?
Yes. I need some fittings that don't go bad. They are lead-free and I do better if I order 50 at a time as compared to doing either onesie-twosies or anything like that. I get a better discount on them. And these are for doing the same thing. I mean, we had a leak right in front of the gas station today. I, two compression couplings and a chunk of copper in order to fix it. So brass fittings are something that we use all the time.
Do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of brass fittings in the amount of $17,625. GL 59100074600.
Support.
Roll call.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
All right, we have superintendent contract. This runs till 2026?
Yes, it would.
Lance, do you plan on staying after the first of the year or you don't know?
Not at this point in time.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this contract until the next meeting. I just had a couple of questions that I prefer to talk to Lance separately about.
I'll support that.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Southwater Municipal Fourth Quarter Invoice. Do we have a motion on this?
I will make a motion to approve this fourth quarter invoice for the Southwater Municipal in the amount of $96,382.61 coming from GL 59000809.
Support.
All right, roll call.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Roy Martin?
Yes. It's right in the middle of residential areas, so we didn't see any reason why it shouldn't go back to residential. And that's it, from C two to R one. Map amendment's been approved by the planning commission. Make a motion to approve the planning commission for that address is.
I'll support it.
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, I'm going to disqualify myself, I'm going to abstain on that. Proposed tax amendment, recreation, commercial, outdoor tax amendment. This is a change of the allowance of campers provided under the proposed ordinance.
Right, right. The proposed ordinance states that for a recreation area, you need ten acres. This amendment reduces it to... I can't remember what it is.
It's, it's from ten to go to six, uh, six provided the size of the lot is smaller to handle it.
So anyways, yeah, I think it's in the six to six sites, is what it is, not, not property size. So, it's, it's a, another recommendation for the ordinances. I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comments.
Good evening again. Cindy Pilato on behalf of SS Downtown, Inc. This week, our governor announced a significant amount of new funding for road improvements across the state. And while I am not at all, I don't know the details of how those funds are distributed. I did want to urge our township leaders to be proactive in pursuing every possible funding option that may be available to us, to direct some of those fundings towards the South Channel Road, the main county road that runs through our downtown San Souci. South Channel has been in poor condition for far too long. The potholes and the ruts are not just unsightly, they're unsafe, and it's only a matter of time before someone gets seriously hurt or property damage occurs. Repairing this road isn't just a, isn't just maintenance, and it's an investment in safety, accessibility, and the long-term vitality of our downtown, along with our, our LG plant. But we have so much potential here, and that progress starts with safe, reliable infrastructure. So, thank you for listening, and I truly hope that this becomes a top priority as new funding opportunities come available.
Wendy, Harrison's Island. I would like to say we lost a hundred thousand dollars in road funding that we could've used. Because, Paul, you didn't, Paul, hello? Paul?
I'm listening.
Can you put your phone down?
I'm listening.
Please, okay. We lost a hundred thousand dollars because you didn't respond to an email and say we needed it. And I would also like to say we don't need a bridge or another ferry. We don't want any more of our taxpayer money wasted on things that we don't need. Thank God Lance got his trailer from, we needed that OHM study like we needed a hole in the head. You said no to Jerry's resignation. Beverly's had to work so hard, thank God she stepped up and became our new treasure. You said no to her coming to be our new treasure. And I don't know how you can stand behind Jerry, a man who did nothing for this township, which you knew all about the whole time. And he calls Anita, called myself, and other women, the C-word. That is just, and you, he's your friend, and you stood behind him for all this. And I personally, for all these people that come here, would like you to step down. I don't think that you can run this township, you have problems running the meetings, and you don't do what's best for us, the taxpayers.
Hello there. Dawn Davy, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Algenac. I was here for the last board meeting of the previous board. And I had a concern then about the tone that had gone on during the election. As I said then, it took decades for the relationship of Algenac and Clay Township to get to where it was not too long ago. I, when I listened to the interview that the supervisor had done with former recalled Mayor Eileen Tash, the first thing that bothered me with that was when she had asked, does Algenac know about this? And the supervisor had said, well, they will after they watch the show. Well, not too many people actually go on Blue Water Healthy Living to watch that show. But it got, it was out there on social media. Now, I watched your August eleventh meeting when it was explained how the interconnect works, which I've, everybody's known about for a while. And it's awesome, should there be an issue at our plant, Clay still has a second option for water. That's what that is. Now, the following week, Eileen Tash came to our meeting and said, and I quote, if I can find it. Oh, she said to us, I don't know if you've heard or if you've addressed it. I understand that Clay Water Department is making a move that they will no longer be purchasing water from the City of Algenac. In fact, they are partnering with IRA. And then she said, I don't know what this means as far as our budget or our finances go. And that was a week later. And during my council comments, I had explained to everyone what they had discussed at your meeting, which was the interconnect, which was not that Clay had decided that they were going to no longer deal with the City of Algenac and that they were gonna deal with IRA. Shortly after, Mr. Cassidy was on Eileen's show, which I won't, I was gonna do the whole living insanely thing, but I didn't. There was on Clay Township's Facebook page, a supervisor report for the week of September twenty-ninth. Now, I'm not in the engineering business, is my time up?
Yeah, but if you want to speak a little bit more, I don't have a problem.
Oh, thank you.
You're only allowed three minutes.
Right, I just want to make sure that everyone is clear. I am so sorry. I apologize. I have a tendency to do that. In the supervisor's report, I think that there is a, someone is mistaken between the interconnect and the interceptor project, because those are two different things. IRA Township has no, anything that I know of, to do with the interconnect. They are not paying into the interconnect at all. They are partnering, they agreed to back in June of twenty twenty-four, I believe it was, approved, a cost sharing with Clay Township, with each of them paying fifty percent of what it is going to cost above the one million dollars for the interceptor. The tone, the tone needs to, I'm, I'm concerned.
It's been.
This shouldn't happen. This shouldn't happen. And I'm hoping that we can get to a point soon where we can all play nice in the sandbox, not have to worry about who said what to who about anything. And to make sure that we have all the information before we put it out there. We need to be able to keep these two communities working together, and I'm concerned at this point. That's all I got. I appreciate the little bit of extra time. Have a good night.
Yes, that would be the lying exponentially show. Good that you don't go on it again, please. So, Mr. Cassidy, you have stated that some of us are misfits and malcontents. That's a mouthful. So, just call me Miss Mal for short, and I'll call you Mr. Ineffective, because that's exactly what you have become. You are a party of five, the party of what is aboard hiding, elect us and you'll find out. Well, we found out. The Pride Board was hiding nothing. But your group has hidden everything that matters, accountability, integrity, oversight, respect for the law, and for its citizens. You funded that campaign, but now three in your party have left the room, leaving you basically ineffective. You haven't resigned, but it's as if you did. We haven't recalled you, but it's if we did. Because right now you sit there like nothing more than a shriveled up weed amongst board members who are here to serve their community, not themselves. And I like seeing you sitting in that chair, because the figurehead you represent now is one of a bad politician trying to push his will on the people who has become ineffective because we, the people, decided to take back our community, and we are succeeding. But a weed can still be destructive, destroying all our hard work, so our work is not done. We support board members who support our community, not those who wish to push their own agenda regardless of how destructive it may be. I don't have to agree with every decision that our board makes. I just need to know that our board members are doing their best, working for our community. And I have an important message for all future supervisors and any elected official who thinks that they can run Clay Township with backroom deals, secret contracts, and ineffective leadership. Try it. Try it. Take a hard look at Mr. Cassidy if you think that you can get away with it. A former judge, former prosecutor, and an attorney who is now sitting on the board is merely a figurehead. He was no match for the residents of Clay Township, and you won't be either.
If there's no further comments, we'll go to board member comments. Mr. DeBoyer?
Yeah, I'd just like to say welcome aboard to Peyton and Matthew to the fire department. And I would like to thank Bev Rose for stepping up and going above and beyond. I know she's putting in long days to try to get things back in shape, and I think this township, I know this board appreciates it. And I also want to say thank you to Kristi Hiltonan for offering her services. I've been around this township a long time. I'm, I'm gonna say that Kristi's probably the best treasurer this township's ever seen. And I think she's going to be a tremendous asset and help to get things in order and progress the way we should. So, thank you to Kristi and Bev.
Mr. Bocher?
Oh, congratulations to Peyton and Matthew, the Clay Township Fire Department. And what John said, as far as thanking Bev for stepping up to the plate, and Kristi as well for coming back and assisting with Bev. That's, that's a major, major step. I would like to see, it was brought up about the data that's been deleted back in twenty-two, twenty-three, that that can be found at some point in time, maybe not, but at least take a look and see if it's possible. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I congratulate Peyton and Matthew also for the stepping up as firefighters. Appreciate Bev doing what she had, and Kristi for wanting to come back. Hopefully, we get our treasury department in line hopefully soon as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Hogan, you ladies don't get angry that I always go with the men first, do you?
Absolutely. No, we're used to it.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I would like to congratulate Peyton and Matthew. Hopefully, you guys work out well and are hard workers. We appreciate you wanting to come work for our fire department. I want to say I'm really looking forward to having someone to work side by side with. Things have been challenging, to say the least, and I really commend, and I think it says a lot about the person that Kristi is for wanting to come back and help after everything that she's been through lately. It's very commendable, and she is an amazing person for wanting to step up and help us out in our time of need. And I also want to say, at the next meeting, I'm hoping to appoint, we can all appoint a new trustee. So, we will not be re-interviewing people that we interviewed, because obviously, that's a long process, and some people are going out after interviewing them time after time. So, if you're still interested, please submit. If there's new candidates, we'll tackle those. But I'm hoping we can appoint someone at the next meeting. That's all.
Welcome to the new firefighters. Good luck with that. I would just like to say how much I appreciate how very helpful and welcoming not just the office staff, but the entire community has been. First couple days, both Anita and I got flowers from the residents. We have people stop in. The emails that I got for the support is overwhelming. And I know you want, you just want your township to succeed. I will never be Kristi Hiltonan, never. She was the best treasurer in my forty years here. I could give her my checkbook and know it came back exactly how I gave it to her. That's how much I trust her. I'm gonna count on her to help me get over this hump. We're gonna get things done, and we're gonna go forward, because that's what we have to do, go forward. That's it.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.